Folks, good evening. Welcome to the new Minitorium. I think we need to give Tim Fairley and his staff a hand for this new Minitorium. They've done a great job, the contractor. Everybody's worked on it. Appreciate what a beautiful facility. Tim?
Just to tell you a little bit about our day before we get started. We actually met today at around noon and toured the STEM school, the construction that's been moving along. And then after that, we interviewed architects for the new INCA Intermediate School. That's what we've been doing all afternoon. And we met in closed session about 5:30 and here we are now. So, the bad thing is, I get to see my shiny head on the TV during the... Didn't realize it was so shiny, but...
You're not alone.
So, this Thursday, June 5th, 2014, meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Education, I'd like to call it to order. And the first thing I would like to do is to recognize the Irwin High School Junior ROTC Program. Are they... Are they here?
They're scheduled.
Oh, here they are. Okay. Here they are. If you'll please stand for the presenting of the colors. If you would please remain standing and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you, and please be seated. All right, we have the agenda. I'd like to make a couple of changes for your approval. One thing that we will do is, right before public comment, we'll be taking a five-minute break. We're going to add a couple of items to the action agenda. One is going to be the addendum to the personnel report, and we're going to be taking action on naming of a new school. So, we'll have three items on the action agenda. And then there's going to be a little bit of a change to our good news. So, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good. All right, so next we have the superintendent's comments. Dr. Baldwin.
Thank you Chairman Reinhart. I know there's a lot of excited people opening up our board meeting in the new Minitorium, but I want to share with you, last week, we had a reception for the new principal of the Discovery Academy, Nathan Allison. And I'll just have to admit that I don't see any excitement that quite shines as brightly as excitement on a lot of the students' faces that were here in this particular facility as they had an opportunity to listen to Mr. Allison and grill him, along with a few parents, and were so excited about his leadership and what this Discovery Academy will represent for Buncombe County Schools. I want to take an opportunity to recognize an individual that's here with us tonight that's going to be part of a presentation, and that is Dr. Kay McLeod. Kay, if you'd just at least raise your hand. I won't make you stand up, but if anybody's interested, she's in the front row. If you're looking at me, she's to my right. Kay's been very special for this, for our school system. She's recently announced that she will be retiring. She has served our system as our district science specialist for the past four years. She began her career as an earth science teacher in 1969. Yes, we got ahold of your records, Kay. Now, since my mom was a forty-two-year career math teacher, I can count a little bit, and that is actually, get this, her career as a science educator spans forty-five years. Is that incredible? Her tenure, Kay, has installed a passion for science in our classrooms. It's evidenced by her motivation for learning and active participation in student learning. And she believes in hands-on inquiry, experiential learning opportunities for all students and teachers. Nathan, that sounds like the creed for the Discovery Academy. She has brought interactive experiences to our students through the Discovery education, through gizmos. Some of you know what a gizmo is in the science classroom, dinosaur digs, and our new geodome. She is recognized throughout North Carolina as a true leader in the area of science education, and she was recently awarded from the state the Science Administrator of the Year. So, Kay, congratulations, and thank you for what you've meant for our kids. You're always so humble. We are now in full testing mode across the county, and that signals a close around the corner to another school year. Graduation ceremonies will actually begin tomorrow evening, so board, make sure you have your calendars out in front of you. Our community high school will be graduating seniors tomorrow, beginning at 6 o'clock. And then our progressive education program will also hold their ceremony, and it will begin at 6:30. Early College will hold a ceremony next Monday, the 9th, and that will be at the Ferguson Auditorium on the AB Tech campus, and that will start at 7 o'clock. Middle College will also use Ferguson, and they'll graduate seniors in the middle of the week, as they should, being Middle College, on Wednesday, the 11th, beginning at 5:30. On Friday evening, June 13th, INCA High School will conduct a 7:00 PM ceremony, and that will be at the U.S. Cellular Center. And then Saturday's ceremonies will begin at the Owen High Stadium, starting at 9 o'clock in the morning, and that will be, again, outside. And I tell you, Principal Turner is one of the bravest administrators I know of. We've been very fortunate, so I'm knocking on wood as I speak. We will follow that graduation ceremony with Reynolds High School. They will be back at the Cellular Center or Cellular Arena, beginning at 11 o'clock. And then Irwin High School will be at 3, and Robertson High at 7:30 in the evening, all again in the U.S. Cellular Arena. The final ceremony, by tradition, will be held in the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium, and that will be our North Buncombe High School graduation, and they will send their seniors across the stage Sunday afternoon, beginning at 2 o'clock. So, those ceremonies are ahead, and I will continue to follow the precedents of the former superintendent, Mr. Cliff Dodson, because he made a point, he would not miss a graduation, he was going to be on the stage. So, Mrs. Turner will have a parking place for me, and I will immediately jump off the stage and head to find Mrs. Sellers, and I will do my best to carry on that tradition as well. I'm looking forward to it. The end of the year also signals a time when budgets come into play for the following school year. So, we are on the hunt to see what the final budgets will be from both the state and local governments. Most recently, the Senate's version of the state budget was released that followed the governor's, and it significantly increased the average rate of teacher pay from the governor's budget, which was set at 2% across the board, to 11%. So, we're very excited about our opportunity to see our teachers are so dedicated, working so hard to see that type of salary increase. However, to offset that cost, there was a significant reduction in funding for our system, as well as systems across the state, in the area of teacher assistance. And that particular budget eliminated those positions for teacher assistance in grades second and third. That cut will represent a loss of approximately $3.7 million to this school system and eighty-one assistant positions. In addition, the teacher salary increase, because any time that state increases salaries, there is some adjustment that has to be made in local funds, because the state funds do not cover the entire amount. And that will mean an additional $1.2 million of local funding. We also, within that budget, will be faced with eliminating 9.5 classroom teaching positions, which will be a tremendous challenge to us. And that is because the ratio was changed in terms of the funding formula, from one to seventeen students to one to eighteen. We await the House version of the budget. I think most of you have heard the presentation over the past four years, that there's four components to the state budget. The governor always comes out first, followed by either the House or the Senate. And then the most important component is that fourth and final budget model, and that is where all three parties sit at the table and come to terms regarding what the final budget will look like. But needless to say, if that Senate budget, if the House budget is close to the Senate's, we're going to have some tremendous challenges as far as the budget goes. It also means that we will become increasingly dependent upon local funding from our county commissioners. The initial budget that was presented on Tuesday by Dr. Green from the county, it represents a $2.4 million increase in funds. However, due to the requirement that we have, that we have to present our budget to the county by May 15th, what we submitted did not reflect the potential for any of these recent Senate cuts, and certainly would not fully represent the increase in local monies to fund that 11% average teacher salary increase. While I applaud, and I sincerely applaud, the continuing support from our county commissioners, next year's projected dip of $1 million into our fund balance and one month's operating expenses was not addressed in the budget that was presented. I think it's very important for our parents and our community to know that of the 105 school systems in the state of North Carolina, we rank eightieth in the state relative to the percentage of that local fund balance, and it's at 18.8%, that we have available to use to offset state cuts and since 2008/09, offset the federal monies that have come and have gone. I believe that this particular rank does represent our efforts to efficiently use our fund balance in combination with savings and cuts across the system to deal with some very difficult budget challenges over the past six years. This particular year, for example, we went into our fund budget approximately $3 million, again, to offset previous state cuts, to offset the loss of federal funds. So, we have some tremendous challenges ahead. We will continue to work in terms of as efficiently as possible to deal with these challenges, but it will be very tough times ahead. So, again, we're looking forward to seeing what the House version will be, and we will certainly hope for the best. I want to recognize all the efforts of the volunteers that took place. We had a ceremony called the Field of Honor. That was a fundraiser for a North Buncombe High School band. And these funds that were raised, they'll support our students' participation at the Pearl Harbor Ceremony in December. And what a beautiful tribute to our servicemen and women in conjunction with Memorial Day of Independence. If any of you had the opportunity to either go there or drive past, I think it's the New Stock Road exit. It is really something to behold. I was also able to attend the band's senior awards program last Friday night, and I'll tell you what, I came away thoroughly convinced that these young people in that program will do such a tremendous job of representing not only the North Buncombe District, but our entire school system, and they will represent us with great pride and a first-class manner. As many of you are aware, the efforts, to some degree, were connected with regards to our concerns regarding our policy 652, which is religion in schools. And I can see a couple of the original members of our faith-based leadership team, I recall sitting for over about three months, working on that policy, along with several individuals from the school system. And I think we all agreed at that time that the easiest part of that policy was putting the words on the paper. The toughest part was putting them in practice. I think it's very important for all of us to recall that, as we developed that policy, we focused on the three Rs. In fact, our communications department did a wonderful job of putting together a video that we showed throughout all of our schools, and those three Rs are respect, responsibility, and rights. And I strongly believe that it's important to advocate for our students and our staff regarding these three, these three particular concepts, they're very basic concepts, and that we continue to advocate for them to be recognized in all of our endeavors, especially our activities and events in which our students and staff participate. Principal Evans, and he's not here tonight, but I do want to recognize his leadership during this whole issue, and I think he appropriately stated in his comments that, and he referenced North Buncombe High School, he says, "Our intent at North Buncombe High School is to include everyone in our educational and extracurricular activities in a way that all feel welcome." So, I want to applaud his efforts. The final thing is a tremendous honor to me, because I'm going to relay to our board a request for naming of a facility, and that request is coming from one of our local representatives within the General Assembly, in fact, one of the leaders of the Senate. And at this time, I want to read that letter to the board, and I believe this has now become an action item, so it will be followed up during that time, Chairman Reinhart. "Dr. Baldwin, I am writing in enthusiastic support to rename the Discovery Academy in Buncombe County to the Martin L. Nesbit Jr. Discovery Academy. Senator Nesbit's mother was a former teacher in Buncombe County. Senator Nesbit was a great advocate of public schools and worked hard for educators in our state. Please let me know if I can answer further questions regarding this subject. Signed sincerely, Tom, Senator Tom Apodaca, from the 48th District." And I know this is now going to the board as an action item, but I do want to say this. I think symbolically, this is very powerful, and it goes to show you the respect and the honor that Senator Martin Nesbit had in not only representing Buncombe County and western North Carolina and education, but how his leadership and his reputation was all over the state of North Carolina. So, Senator Apodaca told me by phone that he simply signed this particular letter, that this represents the wishes of the entire Senate and the General Assembly. And how powerful can that be? If there's ever been a time to reach across the aisle, it is now, and what a powerful symbol this is. So, board, I hope you take that recommendation in strong consideration. I certainly have 110% support from me. That concludes my comments.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Before we move on, I don't know if many of you have had a chance to meet our new communications director, Dr. Donald Porter. We call him Donnie, is with us now, and we want to welcome Donnie to the staff, and he comes via Georgia to us.
Don't hold it against me, Chairman Reinhart.
So, Dr. Porter.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman Reinhart and Dr. Baldwin, members of the board and assembled guests. We begin tonight by recognizing an employee for her ten years of service with Buncombe County Schools. Ms. Laura Norris is a teacher at North Buncombe Middle School, and must be a pretty good one, as she's been selected as the 2014-15 Teacher of the Year. Her colleagues say she is a respected and beloved educator. In fact, I'm told, her art program is one of the most popular elective courses in the district. That's pretty impressive. Her students admit they didn't know art could be so much fun, and they say that she cares deeply about each of them. They feel that. Ms. Norris has her students' artwork all around North Buncombe Middle School's campus, including the decorative tiles lining the Peaceful Path Garden. It's hard to say. And the ever-rotating variety of creative student displays around the school. Indeed, we are very fortunate to have her in our system at North Buncombe Middle School. Ms. Norris, please come forward to be recognized.
Ten years. Tell us where you've been in those ten years. All same place?
Thanks. I was in Henderson County for five years at Rugby Middle School, and then I took seven years off to raise my three kids. And then I keep, I've been living in Buncombe County this whole time, trying to get into the system. And so then I was at Henderson Middle School as a half-time, and then finally was where I wanted to be, which was North Buncombe Middle. And my three children are in the North Buncombe District, so I'm thrilled to be a part of the community where my kids are too.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Well, thank you.
We also have a good news item to share with you regarding a teacher from Bell Elementary School. Patty Long is one of the, is one of only seven North Carolina educators selected to attend the Mickelson ExxonMobil Teachers' Academy this summer. This academy provides teachers in grades three through five with tools to enhance curricula, an opportunity to discover innovative ways to teach math and science, and the chance to network with other educators from all around the United States. At this time, I'll ask our associate superintendent, Ms. Suzanne Swanger, to come up and introduce Ms. Long.
Every Sunday afternoon, when my husband and I watch golf, I always see the commercial about the Mickelson Exxon Academy, and I wonder, when will we have a teacher? We have a teacher. Patty Long is attending this fabulous science activity this summer, and she will bring incredible knowledge back to our school system. She is a fabulous teacher, both inside the classroom and out, and we count on her experience to lead our other teachers in developing more science opportunities for students. Patty, we are so thrilled to have you representing Buncombe County Schools and bringing back wonderful science practices for our children. And I know Ms. McLeod would love to go with you if she could. And I know Ms. McLeod would love to go with you if she could.
I am very excited. When I got the email today to ask what I wanted to talk about, the question was, "Where are you excited about?" I'm going, that's what I'm excited about. Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Bailey, Ward and guests. I just, first of all, want to acknowledge how much I appreciate this recognition. This is 22 years of teaching. I've had lots of wonderful things happen to me in my life, but this is a very exciting one, and I appreciate the acknowledgement. Second, I want to thank Buncombe County Schools for the professional development that we've had for many years, particularly in science and math, and also beginning to integrate lots of content and literacy within. But especially, I'd like to thank Kay McLeod. Kay has had tireless days, long days, sleepless nights, much grant writing, much on-the-ground, putting little bags together of things to go out to make our science program that much more engaging to children. So thank you and congratulations. And then fourth, I think, I've lost track, but anyway, the next one is that I want you to understand that science is a verb. You do science. You can live a lot of things, but you actually have to do science. And so what I'm really excited about is that I get to go and do science with other colleagues who I have not met, but there's a huge Facebook group. And so we're planning all kinds of things already without having known each other. But science being a verb is the very thing that makes it authentic to students. Students can then take what they know and how they love and do science, and apply it, and also connect to everything else in their world. So I'm really excited to be a part of that. And then last but not least, this experience is just really exciting for me. And I once again want to thank you for the acknowledgement that you've given me. And I hope to come back and tell you all about it. It's really, it's all about forces in motion, and it's a lot of the physics parts. And some of what we'll do is visit some of the sites in New York City, it's in Jersey City, and then come back and take what we learned about those different sites and apply them to science. I really can't wait. Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Baldwin, I don't think we can let Kay leave. If she's inspiring our teachers like that, I think you have to stay. So we'll talk about that later. All right, Chairman Reinhardt, I received a call today from Robin Board, the principal at Kane Creek Middle School, asking if she could add an item to tonight's Good News section. When we heard what she wanted to add, the answer was, of course, a resounding yes. I don't want to steal her thunder, so I'll invite her up to share the good news with us all tonight.
If you'll excuse me, I'm going to try and go 21st century here. We received word today that one of our teachers received the Arc of Buncombe County Teacher of the Year Award. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to present her to the school board and the community. And so if Gail Johnson, our EC teacher for Kane Creek Middle School, could come down. Also, the wife, you see that white-haired man standing there, that's the retired principal, Gail Johnson. Little plug there, buddy. What I wanted to share with you about Gail is that we're talking about numbers tonight with 42 and 21, and we have a 31-year veteran here who's not ready to retire yet, and I greatly appreciate that. But she is working diligently to provide support to students and teachers, which translates to that higher growth for our students. Last year, as part of our school improvement plan, we keyed in on our reading scores for students with disabilities. And it was Ms. Johnson who led her EC department. They tirelessly met, discussed, and implemented a plan, which ultimately led the school to reach and surpass our designated percent. So her knowledge of policies and procedures is respected. And in fact, she is our first go-to person for guidance when we have a unique situation that arises. But she's demonstrated, I'm not through, that she is a lifelong learner. In 2011, she received the National Board Certification. And when the school opened in the fall of 2000, she took on the lead of facilitating the Special Education Department with all of the agendas and requirements that needed. I see Todd there, one of our members here. So I appreciate that. But she is appreciated by our entire school, and I wanted to share that. And I thank you for the time that you've given us. The presentation is Monday, so I don't have the plaque to give her this evening, but I did want that recognition. Thank you.
Chairman Reinhardt, that concludes the Good News portion of tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. Ms. Swanger, I believe we have a curriculum feature next.
Yes, sir. Donnie, you're too tall. I hope that we can move this up and down. Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, we will continue our celebration of science this evening. And I too echo all of those wonderful things about Kay McLeod. The Curriculum Department will miss her greatly. And we will promise her that we will keep her passion for science alive in Buncombe County Schools. So with that, we are going to move on to one of her other passions, and that's green schools. Glenn Cook, the editor-in-chief of the American School Board Journal, says, "Green school movement is the biggest thing to happen to education since the introductory of technology to the classroom. They showcase communities' commitment to children, their future, who in turn, children learn from an early age, the importance and the benefits of acting as responsible stewards of their communities in our larger world." And that's what she does each and every day. She works with our schools to celebrate how to be good stewards of our world. So Kay McLeod, please come forward and introduce this year's Green School winners.
Good evening, Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, and audience. Thank you for your comments earlier. Let's pause for a moment and reflect on the past part of Glenn Cook's quote that Ms. Swanger just read to us. Responsible stewards of their communities and the larger world. Responsible stewards of their communities and the larger world. When Jeanne Blunt and I attended the National Green Schools Conference a few years ago, Arnie Duncan, Secretary of Education, addressed this directly. He said, "While the global economy has created new challenges, it has created new opportunities as well. The world is more independent today than ever before. Reducing disease, developing renewable sources of energy, curbing pollution, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions are not challenges that stop at our borders. America simply cannot meet any of these challenges without collaborating with other countries. And those partnerships will require United States students to develop better critical thinking skills, develop a deeper understanding of science and sustainability, and a greater awareness of ecosystems and energy efficiency. You likely read or heard this week about the exciting new Environmental Institute at our own UNC Asheville campus, whose mission is to focus on solving environmental problems while giving students a chance to participate in paid internships and research. Our Green Schools program is what I call our stewardship and skills nursery, where we plant those seeds and nurture those skills that students need to take part in becoming responsible citizens and leaders on planet Earth. Our new Discovery Academy plans to choose a global challenge each year as a curricular focus. David Sobel said it best. "If we wish children to flourish, we need to give them time to connect with nature and love the earth before we ask them to save it." We might amend that tonight to say, "Before we ask them to tackle our global challenges." Evidence from our applications for green schools, our joyful site visits, and what you witness here tonight easily proves that our green schools' activities and projects are preparing our students to face those challenges. But prior to recognizing our schools, I would like to express our gratitude to Fast Signs and Mr. Tom Dieterly. Fast Signs has provided every one of our green schools' banners and many banners over these past four years. So we thank Fast Signs for their continued and ongoing support. And we cannot thank Robin Cape enough, who's here to help me with the awards tonight, for her part in the development and continued growth of our whole program. Our partnership with the North Carolina Green Schools Program that she helped form has been invaluable to Buncombe County Schools. We share its vision and use its rubrics to guide and to help evaluate our schools. This provides a natural transition as our school programs grow, as their points increase, they can receive recognition at our district, state, and perhaps someday even the national level. We even have three schools that will receive dual awards tonight. I would like to remind you that the five main categories of those rubrics are culture and community, school sustainability, healthy schools, curriculum integration, and innovation. There is a reason community is the first category in that list. Without community support in our schools, these programs would not be possible. I apologize for not honoring each community partner by name here tonight. Yet, for the sake of brevity, we will be highlighting these valuable community partners on our Buncombe County Schools' main website within the Green Schools links. Chairman Reinhardt, would you please assist with our presentations? And Robin Cape, would you please assist? We kind of have them in order there. So the first school we'd like to recognize is Kane Creek Middle School. Todd Robertson. And he has a few students with him. He's receiving the Buncombe County Schools' Gold Mini Banner and the North Carolina Green School of Quality Award.
So I've brought two very nervous but very active students with me tonight. They've been instrumental in our recycling program, which I know you've heard a lot about. But one thing that we've done a little bit differently at Kane Creek this year is we're starting to track the amount of our waste in our recycling and so that we can hopefully set some targets for reducing waste and keeping our recycling levels consistent. But this is a program that really involves our entire school, from our administration, all of our teachers, especially our students, but even goes down to our cafeteria manager, support staff. They're all involved in this project. You know, our eighth graders get to study the creek behind our school. They set out their solar ovens and cook smores just today. Tomorrow, we're going to be harvesting garlic from our school garden, so the students get to see that before they leave for the summer. So it's a great program. We continue to be active with it, and we'll continue on into next year. Thank you.
I do want to give one other presentation tonight, and that is for the teachers. We have a few teachers who have been recognized by their peers for the work they do in moving this forward. So North Carolina Green Schools would like to recognize Todd Robertson for his efforts and his cheerleading of this in his campus. I had the honor last year of visiting their school and watching the enthusiasm that he shared, not just held, but shared with all of his staff and his children. It was really exciting. So thank you, Todd.
And we, I'll wait, excuse me. And we have two schools receiving their initial recognition banner tonight. And the first one of those is Avery's Creek Elementary School. Yeah, you love them all, so I think that's a good idea. We have Tara Thompson, Assistant Principal, and a few students. And we're going to hope that some of them would like to share a little bit about their green school practices. Can we open that up?
Hello, my name is Eric. The fourth grade AIG class is working on achieving the Green School Award. We took the rubric and evaluated our school.
Hi, my name is Bella. We found four areas to focus on. They were energy and water conservation, improve communication, improve and increase our recycling program, and start composting.
Hi, my name is Hannah. We received new recycling bins from Borg Warner and composting bins from Donors Choose. We have had planned to start composting for next year. We created a bulletin board, QR codes, and commercials to educate the staff and students.
This is for the children.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
And our next school receiving their initial recognition banner tonight is Joe P. Eblen Intermediate School. We have a big group coming from there. They're very proud.
We collected 27 pounds of aluminum tabs and donated them to the Ronald McDonald Houses, which kept 27 pounds of aluminum out of landfills.
The Blue Bin Brigade is our recycling club. We collect recyclables every Friday, including paper, plastic, and aluminum from the entire school. We have blue bins placed in every classroom, office space, and common area.
We sponsored a clean-out for critters and collected over 500 used blankets and towels and donated them to animal, area animal shelters. We reduced, we reused, recycled, and repurposed these items for the greater good.
My name is Nate Worley, and I'm the winner of the Buncombe County Salon Bar Essay Contest.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And next, we have a few schools renewing their certification. The first of those will be AC Reynolds Middle School. Is anyone here for me? Is anyone here from AC Reynolds Middle School? Okay, we'll be sure to take them their certificate.
Yes, they are.
Okay, she shook no. I apologize. It says so inside. You're good? Okay. Very much. And next, we have North Buncombe High School. Kim Sprouse. Buncombe County Early College is receiving the Buncombe County Schools' Silver Mini Banner.
Thank you.
Oh, come on. They're staying here a little bit. No one else wants to say anything?
Well, we're honored to be one of the high schools in Buncombe County that maintains an active environmental curriculum and culture within our student body. Our students collect data on birds for Project Feeder Watch and really hone their bird identification skills and tree identification skills. We work with local elementary schools to teach them what we've learned about ecology and plant and bird identification, including Mrs. Patty Long's class, if she's still here. And we have a nature trail on campus. We have a garden on campus where we grow food for Man of Food Bank. So we're very honored with this award. Thank you. This is Jennifer.
Hello, I'm Jennifer. I'm a third year at Buncombe County Early College. I'm very proud to say that we are a green school. Our garden, we plant a lot of vegetables, and we give it to Man of Food Bank to give it to other people in need.
Thank you.
The next school is Fairview Elementary, receiving the Silver Mini Banner and the North Carolina Green School of Promise Award.
Thank you. As you'll hear in Charlotte's wonderful paper that she wrote on water conservation and the importance of the water cycle, at Fairview Elementary next year, we're looking to put into place some more water conservation initiatives as well as community outreach. One of the things I love most about working at Fairview is our strong ties with the community, and I would like to use that to our advantage to expand it into our green initiative. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlotte from Fairview Elementary, and I'm going to read a paper called "The Awesome Water Cycle." The Awesome Water Cycle. The water cycle is a cool system. Each day or week, we go through the water cycle, and the water cycle is a crazy ride. It goes up and out of the atmosphere and back to earth. The steps are evaporation, condensation, precipitation, and some in between, then all over again. The water cycle describes the existence and movement of water in, on, and above the earth. Earth's water is always in movement and always changing states from liquid to vapor to ice and back again. The water cycle has been working for billions of years and has, all life on earth depends on it to continue working. First, we'll learn about precipitation. Precipitation is a step in the water cycle that is any kind of water element that falls from the clouds. The elements are rain, snow, hail, and sleet. Now we can move to evaporation. This is when water is heated and the water forms into a cloud. This is evaporation. Evaporation is a part of the water cycle before precipitation. The water that evaporates is from lakes, streams, rivers, oceans, and more. Now we can talk about the water vapor. Water vapor is the evaporated water that the sun heats. Where you find it, evaporated water starts to form a cloud. Now we can move on to runoff. Runoff is in a part of the water cycle that transfers the water to lakes, oceans, from the mountains. Runoff is a big part of the water cycle. Now we can move on to groundwater. Groundwater is held underground in the soil so that plants drink the water it holds. The plants can move to transpiration. The condensation...now we're at condensation. Condensation is when evaporated water cools and forms a cloud. The cloud forms some kind of precipitation. The water vapor changes to liquid water. So to sum it up, it occurs when the water vapor cools and turns back into water droplets. Now on to sun's energy. The sun's energy is heat provided by the sun. The sun helps the water evaporate. You might not think the sun is a big part of the water cycle, but now you can see it's a huge part of the water cycle. Water is one of our most important resources, as every living thing needs water to survive. Water conservation means using less water or recycling used water so that it can be used again. This type of program is important because water conservation helps save energy and prevent people from using so much water. It is important to conserve as much water as we can to support this cycle, such as not running the faucet while brushing your teeth, taking short showers instead of baths, so we can collect rainwater and use the water in the garden. I'll leave you with a thought. If every household had a faucet that dripped once each second, 928 million of gallons of water would leak away each day. Thanks for listening.
We would also...sorry. We would also like to present Fairview Elementary School with the North Carolina Green School of Promise Award and to give Katie Edwards an Outstanding Teachers Award. And last, yet in no way least, we have Coontz, Charles T. Coontz, receiving the Buncombe County Schools' Silver Mini Banner and North Carolina Green School of Quality Award.
At Coontz Intermediate, we have three environmentally geared clubs that make up the green team.
Recycling Club is responsible for school-wide recycling and promoting awareness of the three Rs.
The gardening team was responsible for planting and maintaining our garden as well as our campus beautification. We also used a cistern, which is a giant rain barrel, to water our plants.
Think globally, act globally, is a group of students that meet weekly to go over global issues. They prepare projects to improve the community. We are very proud of kids.
And the MC Green School Award for a School of Quality goes to Charles T. Coontz Intermediate and to Jo Lee Atkins for teachers.
There's a black Jetta in the parking lot that has their lights on. So, and we're going to take a five-minute break, so.
If you are here and you would like to make public comment, if you wouldn't mind, if you haven't signed up, please come down to the front, to the far right here next to the door, and please sign up. I will tell you that I am no longer the official timer. We have a timing device. When it's...you have three minutes. You'll be on the green light. When you get down to 30 seconds, you'll have the yellow light. And when you get at three minutes, you'll get the red light and you'll hear a ding, so.
And then a big hook will come out and...
That's right. If you get more than two dings, you're in trouble, so.
One thing that's a little different in here is when you come up for public comment, if we'll come to the center podium right here and that microphone is on, and that way we can get your audio. But just that's one little difference we wanted everybody to know. And the first for public comment is Fife Ashenbrenner.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Fife Ashenbrenner. I'm here representing WNC for Public Education. I'm not alone, there are other members in the audience, but they're here on other reasons. So, but we wanted to introduce ourselves, and we are a nonpartisan organization comprised of parents and community members from all over Buncombe County. We're here tonight to introduce ourselves to you and thank all of you for your dedicated service to our children and to the schools in our neighborhoods. Thanks to all of you who attended our forum on May 8th, and Chairman Reinhardt, thank you for participating. We created WNC for Public Education because we, as parents, know firsthand how much our children need quality education and how much a community needs strong public schools. We have a deep appreciation for the teachers, staff, and administrators at our schools, and for the dedication they bring every day to the classrooms, lunchrooms, buses, and playgrounds. Our kids learn many of life's most important lessons at school, and we're grateful that we have trustworthy educators to teach and guide them. Our group's goal is to work with leaders in our county and state to ensure that our students and schools receive the resources they need to succeed. Our top three areas of concern to work toward are, one, minimizing tests and assessments to protect instruction time and to protect our students' love of learning; two, to increase school funding for classrooms; and three, ensuring equitable funding for teachers and teacher assistants so North Carolina has the ability to retain and attract talented teachers. Given the current status of educational funding from the state, we would like to recognize that our schools are a positive organization. we would like to explore the possibility of a tax referendum as mentioned at the Buncombe County Commissioners Meeting on Tuesday. Currently, Buncombe County's per pupil spending comes in eighty-first in the state, and you mentioned Dr. Baldwin, out of one hundred five. Our, our per pupil's spending is seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two per pupil, whereas the city schools with their special tax allows for eleven thousand two hundred forty-three per pupil. The average in the state is above eight thousand six hundred. We'd be happy to provide volunteers to help research the county's interest in small, in a small supplemental tax. We're requesting that you discuss this possibility in more depth at your June thirtieth meeting. We believe it's crucial to move quickly to get this on the ballot. We would also like to meet with you begin, to begin a discussion more generally about funding for our schools and about current practices for standardized tests and assessments. Thank you for your time. We look forward to collaborating with you and other leaders in the county. I do have, um, some information on per pupil spending that I'd like to hand to you to have copies. I also have some, uh, information about contacts. So that we'd really, you know, we need to collaborate.
Thank you, Ms. Ashenbrenner.
You're welcome. Who shall I hand this to?
You can, you can bring it to me.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Jerry Rice.
I'd like to point out some things here. Got a lot of praise denied, good comments, and the kids like that. But, uh, issue here on the planning of this particular room, I'd be considering your risk management section because of what we see behind us. I don't see how that this could be deemed safe and as a fire exit, I don't see how you get out of here in time anyway. That'd be two things. The other thing is Martin Ned, but I think he's certainly worthy of this honor to be named after him. I note him as professional and as a private citizen, and I respect him very much, and I think he'd do this honor. Uh, you never could get away from him if you started talking. Even if you walked away, he'd still follow you. You know, he's just that kind of fellow. He loved to talk and he loved to talk about education. I loved him to death. Uh, the thing that I am concerned about is in the Inca District is the intermediate school that's going to be going to the architect to be built. The firm that was chose today, I predicted it before they ever set down their drawings because of the political end of situation. I know that this was the firm that's going to be taken out or taken, uh, on the contract. Here's my concern. I will not shut up. You can shoot me, you can hire hitters or whatever you want, but I won't shut up. I've lived in the Inca District since nineteen fifty-nine. I know the environmental parts of this property, two hundred and twenty-eight acres, better than anybody in this room. And I can tell you for a fact with this proof and part of it that I've gave you on CD eight months ago, and I don't think a one of you has looked at it or entertained it. Maybe Mrs. Baldwin, thank you, Mrs. Baldwin, for honoring that. Uh, but I'm gonna tell you something. These environmental green kids that got up here did a great job. Every school that's being built, everyone that's been built along the creek, there are access to the creek or want to access the creek. I'm gonna tell you what, if these green kids is going to the Hominy Creek to access that creek, we're gonna have all kinds of colored kids. They're gonna turn purple, they're gonna turn all kinds of colors just from the environmental impact from that creek. If you wanna know the toxics in that creek, I've got it. Uh, uh, we don't need to, if you've got seasoned people in the environmental end of this state that has to wear boots and, and all kinds of other things to step into that creek to take samples, what do you think's in that creek? Okay? Let that soak in for a while. Now, the architect, today, when he stumbled over something, the question was asked about the geothermal, and he stumbled all over it. You know why? I've got a son-in-law that was a third or the fourth in the state of North Carolina for geothermal license. Very smart boy. Not because he's my son-in-law, but because he's smart. He went to North Buncombe High School, and so did my grandkids. Got an engineer out of that bunch. So let me tell you, you're not talking to somebody stupid, dumb, and ignorant. You're talking to a very smart fellow because I've got plenty of intelligent people to help them.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Don't drill wells on this property for geothermal. That's the reason he didn't want to talk about it.
Next, we have Karen Byrd.
Superintendent Baldwin, Chairman Reinhardt, and members of the board. My name is Karen Byrd. I would like to publicly thank you, Dr. Baldwin, for your support of Principal Jack Evans and the North Buncombe Band Booster Club, where in the midst of several recent events, we're falsely accused of violating school policy. Thank you for attending the band banquet and standing behind the decisions the club made, for realizing there was no intent to offend nor any attempt to exclude or persuade any person in any way. Board members, thank you to those who responded to my concerns over the way my district and personal friends were dishonored and defamed. I believe a public statement from this board in support of Dr. Baldwin's decision is not only admirable but necessary in presenting a strong and unified team. Because several of you did not respond to my concerns, it leaves me wondering where you stand. The issues faced recently surrounding the Field of Honor are going to arise again and again. The issue, it seems, is God and Jesus Christ. History reveals that upheaval has always surrounded Jesus and I believe always will. It would appear that you continue to have decisions to make and sides to take, but I do not believe it has to be that way, a constant struggle or stress. The key is knowing exactly what you believe and knowing the rights that encompass those beliefs. In this particular case of God and public prayer, I know exactly what I believe. When a situation arises, I don't have to wonder where I stand. I know my rights. I know that I live in the free United States of America. I have read and understand the First Amendment. I know that I am free to pray to God. I also know the God spoken of in the Pledge of Allegiance. I know the Creator spoken of in the Declaration of Independence. I live in this country proudly because I agree with the fundamental decisions it was founded upon. While I do know and exercise my freedoms, I will not force others to do what I do, nor will I allow them to force me into giving up my freedoms. In prayer or any other venue, if I choose to participate, I will. If not, I won't. I say this because freedoms unexercised will eventually be lost. I encourage you to know and do the same. You do not have to agree with me or any other person who is passionate on this subject, but be prepared and know what you believe. If you're committed to Christ, then be committed a hundred percent when these confrontations arise because they will arise again. If you do not, then stand beside those beliefs as well. Attempting to please every citizen will never work. Standing one hundred percent on your core belief is the only way to be true to yourself and to those who elected you. The expression of freedom of religion already exists. No policy has to be formed to create or deny that. In this case, the infringing of rights comes into play when one is forced to participate in the offering of prayer. That is wrong and unconstitutional. However, when one is told they cannot pray is a violation of something I am not willing to give up. My life, my liberty, my pursuit of happiness, and my freedom. All of the above, I believe to be a gift from the only living God. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd.
Next is Michelle Hammond.
Dr. Baldwin, Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board. My name is Michelle Hammond from Weaverville. As you well know, recent events have stirred up another controversy regarding the name of Jesus in the public arena. Had any other name been mentioned, we would not be here tonight. But because Jesus's name has the power to change hearts and lives, we're here. Thankfully, Dr. Baldwin clarified the event in question, that it did not, in fact, break the law or any school board policy. And I want to publicly thank him and commend him for making that statement. It is unfortunate that some people were offended by the prayers offered at the Field of Honor. However, there was no intent to offend, nor was there any reason that those offended had to remain at the event on recognizing that prayer was on the agenda for the day. Our nation's laws and our local policies do not and should not prevent prayer on private property. Undoubtedly, each of us has been to many public events where we did not agree with everything that was said, nor how it was said. However, rights were not violated and apologies were neither expected nor given since it was our individual choice to attend. Our nation thrives on freedom, the very freedom protected and guarded by those for whom the Field of Honor flies. While I appreciate our superintendent publicly explaining that policy was not broken, helping to get the focus off the complaints and back on the purpose of the Field of Honor, I am concerned by the relative silence of this board. I appreciate that two members of the board took the time to respond and acknowledge the concerns expressed on behalf of the North Buncombe Band Boosters. And while responding to every email and every concern may be an unreal expectation, expecting our elected officials to acknowledge that an issue exists and to state his or her position on a very public issue is not unreasonable. When the media presents a very one-sided view of the issue at hand, the right and proper response by those in authority is to publicly share the truth of the matter. Otherwise, the loudest voice of offense is allowed to bully public opinion and to slant media coverage in an unfair and untruthful manner. By this board remaining silent, the unintentionally offended party has used its voice to treat others unfairly and perpetuate the distraction. The volunteers who worked tirelessly to make the Field of Honor happen and to support our North Buncombe Band students' trip to Pearl Harbor deserve recognition and support from this board. Thank you again, Dr. Baldwin, for recognizing this work earlier this evening. I appreciate the dedication and time each of you commit to our schools and students in Buncombe County. Your support of our teachers, students, principals, and volunteers is vital to the success of our schools. I am asking that you demonstrate support for Dr. Baldwin and the North Buncombe District by recognizing what a positive value, valuable memorial the Field of Honor represents, and that you take a stand tonight in issuing a statement reiterating that nothing wrong or improper has occurred and publicly supporting the opening and closing ceremonies of this event as public community events where everyone can choose whether or not to attend. Thank you.
Next is Marvin Mercer.
Dr. Baldwin and the board, my name is Marvin Mercer, and I guess, uh, I'm a big part of the reason y'all, we're here all here tonight, so. My wife and I are the chairs for the Pearl Harbor Committee for the North Buncombe High School Marching Band. And as the chairs for that committee, it is our job to run the entire team, if you will, that is responsible for getting roughly a hundred and twenty kids, uh, to Miami, to Hawaii and back. And that's a big task, and it takes a lot of money, it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. One of the things we decided to put together was a Field of Honor. I have seen the one in Fayetteville several times, and we decided, you know, this was a good thing. Yeah, I think if you've seen it, it's, uh, it's very impressive. Um, we put it together, it was on private property. We spoke to the owner, he donated the property, and it went off without a hitch, went very well, just like it was planned to. Students were not required to be there. We had about seventy-four, seventy-five kids there. And one of the last statements I made was, imagine what they would sound like if they were all here. Um, obviously, there were a couple of three, you know, a few folks maybe that were offended. I read at least two articles. Um, and I will say this, out of the three hundred and fifty or four hundred, and I'm estimating people that were there, exactly zero of them came to me after the event and expressed any concern whatsoever, including, um, any of the students and the gentleman that, um, wrote the article, commentary earlier in the week, who have also seen it three other events subsequent to the field. What I will say is this, the, the, the field itself represents, um, a lot of sacrifice. One of those would be that, that every voice could be heard. I think it's fair that Mrs. Stravelli's voice should be heard. A single voice, maybe two or three, whatever. What it, what our constitution in our country does not allow for is the minority to rule the majority. And when you've got one or two or ten, and you've got three or four hundred, it's clear that you have a minority trying to rule a majority. And I don't know, I wanna say thank you to Dr. Baldwin. We met for the first time last Friday night, and I understand why it came out at seven-thirty. I got all that. I do wanna say thank you, but I don't know what y'all are gonna do here, if you're gonna come out publicly. Well, I will say this, we've done this four or five times now over the last ten years. At some point, who's being bullied? Okay? Because of my name has been from here to California on the AP wire in the last week. Okay? So what I'm saying is, you got students sometimes that act all up and everything, and you expel them. Maybe that same rule should apply to parents.
Next is Sybil Sue Stravelli.
Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Chairman Reinhardt, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to share my concerns on the opening of the Field of Honor. And I'd like to say, first of all, that I'm not going to talk about any offenses, that, any offenses that me and my family have dealt with. I'm, I'm solely concerned on the policy breach that has happened. I attended this event as a band member and as the head drum major newly appointed of the next year. I can definitely, um, account that it was a required event. There was a newsletter sent out by the boosters, actually, that says, and I, I just have it on my phone, sorry, I didn't get time to print it out. The opening ceremony is, um, Saturday, May twenty-fourth. All high school students need to report to NBHS Band Room at one-thirty PM wearing long jeans, white member shirt, and black shoes. There was, we were bussed over there and we were bussed back. And out of approximately about four hundred people, like Mr. Mercer has said, I had at least fifty people complain to me from that event, at least. And I've had people that weren't at the event who's complained to me, and I've, I've received much of that, and I'm here to, um, I'm here to represent the whole band as the head drum major and as, and as a human being, I'm here to represent the minority. Um, I'm here to discuss that there was a statement made Friday night by Mr. Baldwin after he spoke with his attorney that the prayers were not against policy. Now, I come to inform you that Dr. Baldwin and his attorney may have unfortunately been misinformed, sorry. Most of the reasoning that I heard behind the statement, as I understand, was that it was off school grounds, which, incidentally, is irrelevant in cases of policy breaches. And also that it was a volunteer-organized event. And there was a booster meeting at the beginning of this year saying that boosters still had to follow school policies. They don't have to follow the budget, but they do have to follow policies. And I remember there was a meeting specifically about this. And also that teachers weren't, um, taking action in this event. Mr. Shelton was there directing the band, and Captain Sullivan, the RTC teacher, was there, and he spoke. And Mr. Evans didn't speak, but he was there in support of the band and in support of the fundraising event. And most importantly, that the students were not, were not required to go is the reason that we've heard, but I can attest that we were. Mr. Shelton had told us the band, there were some students who were, they were excused because the eighth graders didn't get to rehearse, so they couldn't make it because they hadn't rehearsed with us. And then there was a scheduling miscommunication that some dance students could not attend because they had a dance, um, recital. And so I urge you all to continue to consider this issue, as there has been communications. And I still see this as an issue that needs to be acted upon, as it is indeed a policy breach and should not be disregarded. Thank you all so much for your time and consideration.
Next is Ginger Stravelli.
Hello, I'm Ginger Stravelli, if anyone doesn't know. I'm here to address the religions policy being violated. And yes, it was violated. Yes, the children were forced to go. I received the email directing me to have my daughter there. Nowhere in that email did it say, "If you would like." Nowhere in that email did it say, "There will be prayers." By you not punishing the band, you are inviting these band boosters to be emboldened to do this over and over and over again, ad nauseam. As we speak, right now, the North Buncombe High School Jazz Band is at the Weaverville Bike Night. Bike Night. Those of you from North Buncombe, like Ms. Franklin, will know, the Weaverville Bike Night's pretty much a 1930s tent revival minus one snake handler. And that's the problem, is y'all want to cling to these 1930s ideas and values of how the school system's gonna be run, and it is the 21st century. We're gonna progress, we're not going backwards. You're not gonna succeed in stopping that progress. If you continue to allow the gutting of this policy with loophole after loophole, it opens up us to an incident after incident after incident all next year. It'll be the Irwin Cheerleaders in August, it'll be the Reynolds Wrestling Team the next month, it'll be the Band Boosters at Buncombe County the next month, it'll be the Little Jump Ropers at the elementary school the next month. If you let this policy be gutted and loopholed over and over, you're inviting that, and do you want that? Or do you want to uphold the policy that we wrote that is constitutional and correct? These people can pray in their own churches, in their own homes, they're not gonna pay to my children at a public school event. If they need to pray at their school events, send your children to a Christian school, there's plenty of them.
Hello, Tony Baldwin and board, my name is Emily Oliver, I am a senior at North Buncombe High School. I've decided to speak after the clear religious policy breach we've had. Quite frankly, I think I am a little too young to already be so disheartened by such a broken system, and so disappointed in the adults who should know better. I feel like in this situation, and others like it, people are being petty and needlessly competitive, rather than treating this like a situation in which you're winning or losing. It should be handled based on what is right and what is wrong in accordance with the law. It's easy to be sympathetic with both sides of an argument like this, given the real number of articles in our Constitution that remain vague and widely open to interpretation. However, our founding fathers, being of multiple faiths, made it clear in the Establishment Clause that Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion. Contrary to what many believe, our nation was founded by men of many faiths and religious backgrounds, who wanted to make sure that all those faiths be protected under the law. If you have any doubt of this, this law's meaning or intention, perhaps this quote will sway you. Every new and successful example, therefore, of a perfect separation between ecclesiastical and civil matters is what is important, and I have no doubt that every new example will succeed in showing that religion and government will both exist in greater purity the less they are mixed together. James Madison, the man most largely and wholly responsible for the drafting of the First Amendment. I believe that he made his intentions for the law abundantly clear in saying the quote, and now, in closing, let me make mine clear as well. You cry that you are being oppressed, and yet you fight tooth and nail against a law that's fighting to end the real oppression occurring right now. But this law is the law, ladies and gentlemen. You don't have to like it, you don't have to support it, but you better well have to follow it. No one should be exempt from the United States Constitution. If you want to hear Bible verses, go to your church, pray at home, watch the film Fiddle on the Roof. But keep it out of public school system, or what is said not only affects you, but everyone around you.
Next is Jenny Anna.
Hello, and thank you for your time. I would just like to say that I think this whole fiasco really misrepresents the band, and the band is made up of a huge diversity of high schoolers that are of different faiths, and it's not fair to them to experience this oppression and bigotry at such a young age. And yes, it was a policy breach, and I think the people who breached that policy should have to serve time for it.
Finally, we have Pamela Fillion.
Hello. My son is a student at Kane Creek Middle School, and on Monday, he was hurt with an injury that needed medical attention. No one from the school called me, I was at work, I had no idea. When I got home that evening, I had to take him to the emergency room, and he had five stitches put in his face. Assistant Principal Mr. Watts was very nonchalant about why I was not called. I was not called because it was more important to get the students on the bus, it was the end of the day, and that trumps the student with a medical emergency. My son, yeah, he had five stitches that night. There seems to be a recurrent bully issue at this school. This was the fourth incident with my son in the last two years. I know several other parents who are also having incidences with bullies that they are not reporting because they don't feel like the system to deal with bullies is sufficient enough to deal with this. I would like to see a new, more current, absolute zero tolerance bully, anti-bully program be implemented in this school before somebody gets hurt seriously. I would also like to know why there are more than two classes in a PE class. Obviously, there's not enough teachers to pay attention to this many students. If kids are getting hurt and bullied and basketball's thrown at them and punches and pushed, there's not enough supervision going on, and I don't understand why. And finally, there should be a policy to contact the parents immediately if there's any doubt in anybody's mind that there might be medical attention needed. This has caused a nightmare for me this week. All I've done is tried to figure out what to do. Do I press charges? I don't press charges. I'm at a loss. I've never had to deal with this before, and the school's been less than helpful in helping me. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
All right, we're gonna move on to the action agenda. The first item on the action agenda is the addendum to the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the addendum to the personnel report?
Go move, Mr. Chair.
There a second. Any questions or comments?
I ask to pull this off the consent agenda because I cannot vote to approve this addendum to the personnel report because sufficient information was not provided in a timely manner.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the renewal of the contract for liability property, auto, and workers' compensation insurance. Do I have a motion to approve?
Go move.
There a second.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the naming of our Discovery Academy, renaming of our Discovery Academy.
Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we name this Discovery Academy the Martin L. Nesbit Junior Discovery Academy.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Could I speak to that, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Martin Nesbit dedicated his adult life to working for people, all people, the people in Buncombe County and this state. He was a tireless defender and fighter for education and for the promise of better opportunities for our students and the people of this county. It's very fitting that this Discovery Academy bear his name, and, Mr. Chair, I move the naming of the STEM High School in Buncombe County, the Martin L. Nesbit Junior Discovery Academy.
Any other questions or comments?
I didn't know if Mr. Nesbit's family was invited for this approval.
They were invited.
I didn't know if they were here, if we should recognize them.
Franklin?
They were invited, and none are here.
Okay, all right. All right, any other questions or comments?
They had previous engagements. It's not that they, it's not that they didn't come to the party.
All right, all in favor of naming the Discovery Academy in honor of Senator Nesbit, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Dr. Baldwin, do you have a letter you'd like to read from the family?
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Franklin, since she put the motion in place, to read an email that I received from Martin Nesbit's son, Mark. So at this time, I'm gonna ask her to read this.
On behalf of the Nesbit family, I am both humbled and honored to learn of the naming of the new Buncombe County STEM school in honor of my dad, Martin L. Nesbit Junior. The new school is a win-win for both the students and the business community of Buncombe County and Western North Carolina. Hopefully, with this school, we can now train those students that are talented in science and math to embrace and achieve their God-given talents while at the same time introducing them to the business arena in Western North Carolina. Hopefully, the seed will provide a welcome and a calling for them to return to their roots after they have graduated from college and are embarking on a new career. As many of you know, my dad came from a long line of educators, including his parents, who were both teachers in Buncombe County schools. Improving North Carolina education was the primary focus of his agenda and the legislative efforts throughout his 33 years in state office. He would be honored with this naming of the STEM school. Thank you, Martin Nesbit.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
It's hard not to say junior.
I just really appreciate Senator Apodaca bringing that to this board.
Exactly.
I think it's a great honor and very, very fitting. Moving on next to our consent agenda, we have several items, including some policies that are on there for a second reading. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move, Mr. Chair.
And do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next meeting that we have, we have a list of our meetings for next year. We have a couple policies on there for first reading. Our next meeting is on June 30th. We actually do not have a meeting in July, so it'll be June 30th, and then the next meeting will be August 7th, 2014. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.